Okay, let me have your attention, please.
Sorry.
The meeting of the Land Department Appeals of October 16th, 2018 will not turn the water. Roll.
Mr. McQuaughan?
Here.
Mr. Figueroa?
Here.
Mr. Wooten?
Present.
Mr. Wood?
Present.
Mr. Cole?
Present.
Mr. Chisano?
Present.
Mrs. Curley?
Present.
Mr. Calvin?
Present.
We have a court. First case this evening is a continued case, 6th and 12th Street. Mr. Cole, can you read the...
Yeah, so this was to allow the construction of a 12 by 16 covered rear deck to be added to an existing single-family residence upon an undersized lot in zoning District R1, near as in seven and a half feet from the sideline. We have a letter from the petitioner, basically dated October 15th. I will not be able to attend tomorrow's hearing, which will be October 16th, due to work-scheduled conflict and also due to the reason that I am the person drawing... that the person drawing the additional plans was out of the country for a few weeks. I will receive the paper this week and will submit soon. Thanks, Juan Salvador. There is a waiver. He did sign a waiver, request to continue the petition.
Okay.
So, I'm making a motion that we continue it till... What's the next meeting, November what?
November 20th.
November 20th.
I have a second minute.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Wooten? To continue?
To continue.
Yes, to continue?
Yes.
Mr. McQuaughan, yes to continue? Mr. Cole, yes to continue?
Yes.
Mrs. Curley, yes to continue?
Yes.
Mr. Calvin, yes to continue?
Yes, to continue the case, but we continue it until we want to... First case this evening is 129 Dartmouth Street. Please call the roll.
Sure. This is by the petitioner Patricia Skangis by her attorney, Thomas Demakis, to allow the reconfiguration of four lots containing a total of 24,000 square feet into two lots, one containing 15,000 square feet with a single-family house and the other a vacant parcel containing 9,000 square feet, which is less than the required area.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tom.
Hello, thank you, I'm the floor.
Sorry. My name is Tom Demakis. I represent the petitioner. We see at the night, Pat Skangis. This 129 Dartmouth Street is a house that her dad built a long time ago, and it was in a subdivision...
A subdivision.
...that consisted mainly of 6,000 square foot lots. I got one from the call. And I've got outline... This is the assessors map on the assing, however. And I've got outline in red. The four... What he did is he combined four 6,000 square foot lots into one 24,000 foot lot, and he built this house, 129 Dartmouth Street, on the 24,000 foot lot. And if you look at the remaining lots in the subdivision, 6,000, all these from here to here are 6,000, 8,000, 8,800, 6,000, 6,000, 6,000, 8,600, 12,000 here, 10,000 here across the street, all between 60, 700, and 12,000, okay? But he has, by part, this lot in the neighborhood, 12,000 by 24,000, which now his daughter owns, Patricia Skangis. So what she'd like to do is divide into two lots and create a buildable lot. There's a big chunk of land on the left-hand side that you face the house and the street. I submit this... Has everybody got this in their package? I submit this to the petitioner. So, you can see...
Tom, do you have an extra?
Yes, I do. Anybody else with someone? You've got plenty. So you can see, these dotted lines represent the original bounds of the original 6,000 foot blocks, which were then combined into a 24,000 foot lot. So she has a right to go to the planning board, do an A&R plan, and divide off 10,000 feet and make a buildable lot with the 10,000 feet. What she'd rather do is to make a lot with 9,000 feet, for which we need a variance, because then we would have on the new lot less than the required area of 10,000 feet. And that's why we're here tonight, to ask the board to give us a variance. Now, Ralph Reed did two plans. Maybe the better way to do it is to S. Start at the center and pass him down, and I'll take the other one instead. And you guys start at the center and pass on the other way, and then everybody will have one there.
It's B.
Believe in that.
That's just the way it is. These are made out of meat. Something missing, B was missing?
Oh, here we are.
Yeah, I had some extra. It's all right. Okay. So Ralph did an A-plan and a B-plan. Let's look at the A-plan first. The A-plan is the one for which we don't need a variance, and it shows how we would subdivide the 24,000 feet as a matter of right with no variance. And you can see that the property line is 10 feet from the side of the house. The setback requirement is seven and a half feet, so it doesn't violate that. But on the other side of the house, the other side of the house, the garage, is 20 feet from the right property line, so the house wouldn't be properly centered on the remaining land. And also, to create 10,000 feet next door, you have to have this little diagonal jaw in the back, which looks kind of lousy. And a much better configuration is the 9,000-foot configuration, which does two things. First of all, and looks better for the neighborhood, it has a straight boundary line going from the street back to the back line. And it also leaves 19 feet between the edge of the house and the boundary line, so now the house is properly centered on the 15,000-foot lot. And that's what we're asking the board to approve tonight. They could do 10,000. We're asking them... But, you know, and if you look, 9,000, 9,000 is bigger than most of the other lots in this subdivision, mostly a lot in the neighborhood. And it's 50% bigger than most of them. Most of them are 6,000 feet either.
Right here.
And this is 9,000 that we would have. So we're asking that you approve it. It's a nicer configuration for the property owner. It's a nicer configuration for the neighborhood. Do you want to add anything?
I don't have any questions from Mr. Demakis.
Well, I saw a beautiful home with an exquisite lot with magnificent trees.
Lots of green.
But, yeah, to be gone. But I didn't see any stakes.
We have to get it approved.
No. I'm not voting for something. I can't even see... I can't tell if I'm a piece of paper. You know, you know me, and you know it should be staked. I want to be able to look at it and know what's going where, what she's going to have left and what's going to be on the lot, where a house is going to be built at some time. And that's the way it's always been, and you know me. And I am not voting for something that wasn't staked. I don't know what I'm voting for. I know I'm voting for... It looks like a little teeny piece of something here. From my eyes, I have to see it staked.
And strike.
I'm sorry.
And strike?
Well, that's what it's... That's the regulations.
Staked. You plan on putting a house on the 9,000-foot lot?
I'm sorry?
So you plan on building a house on the 9,000-foot lot?
But they want to retain the option of putting a house on there.
So you don't plan on putting one right away, no? What's the size of the house on the lot?
How big's the house, though?
It's about, um...
1,000 square feet's the house.
Your house.
Can you give your name and address? Can you give your name and address for the record?
The lot's on 9 Dartmouth Street.
What's your name?
Skangis, Patricia. Is it 18?
The lot, the lot...
They want still have one square.
Right, so...
Not even that.
The house is probably...
Just look at the...
I'm guessing, 3,000.
3,000.
It's a nice-sized house for a lot of management.
It's a ranch.
Yes. I'm guessing.
On the plan that I... It's not... Still, 9,000, a house with the setback on that 9,000.
Well, he was... Mr. Reed was just demonstrating that the...
That's what I'm saying.
Right.
There was a plan showing the footprint of the house.
Right. Showing that he...
An envelope.
I'm sorry?
An envelope.
An envelope. Right, exactly. Exactly. But that would be a pretty big house. That house would be... If he, if he, uh... He just showed the envelope using the required setback, so he had the seven and a half feet away from each sideline.
Yeah.
So that means he had a 75-foot wide house.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you over the square footage, you wouldn't do that.
Yeah, yeah. So that was just showing where the house could be, anywhere in that envelope legally.
Yes, I understand.
But that's not proposed house. There is no proposed house.
Yeah, but I'm only saying, I know that's an envelope. I've seen many of those plans come in through there.
Right.
Showing the envelope, so they can position...
Anywhere they want.
Yeah, within that envelope.
Right, exactly.
But we don't normally vote for that envelope. But that is the plan that's presented here.
The only variance I need is on the area.
You get a B-plan. This is the one you get on the table.
The B-plan is the one you want to...
That's what I'm saying.
Right.
I'm just saying there was another one, but this is the one that we have.
Right. A B-plan. Yes.
Black stairs now.
That does stand here.
Anyone else have any questions?
It could help the community if it's a smaller lot, because the three lots next to it is 6,000 square feet, so this would be a 9,000. So it wouldn't be a large house that potentially could be built there. Is that the thinking?
Well, you know, you're right. You can't build a huge house on it, but you can build a comfortable house on it, which I think it's a neighborhood of comfortable houses.
Anyone else have any questions?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment to make, you know, and I mentioned it earlier to the attorney that usually when we're doing subdivisions like this with a house on an existing lot, it says in the other parcel will support a single-family house. Usually people are coming in and requesting not only the subdivision, but the right to build on that other lot. And then that's what they say in the ad, that, you know, existing lot and then a single-family to be built on the new lot.
But it's not going to be built.
But it's... Well, that's right, not today.
It's going to be created, buildable lot. But here's...
But I'm just saying, you're not asking us to create a buildable lot. You're just asking us to subdivide.
If you go by the ad, the ad's ambiguous, but if you go by my petition, and I didn't write the ad, but if you go by my petition, there's nothing ambiguous in my petition. My petition says, "Allow the reconfiguration, four lots containing a total of 24,000 square feet into two lots, one containing 15,000 square feet with a single-family home and the other vacant, the other a vacant parcel containing 9,000 square feet, which is less than the required area."
For what?
For buildable lot. You're not creating a lot unless it's a buildable lot. It's not a lot.
It's a buildable lot. Does that mean they don't want to...
How do I know you're not going to make it a junkyard? I mean...
That's what I'm saying. No, right, I'm saying, no, they want to come back to it.
And I'm asking what you're going to use it, the lot for. What's the intention of the other lot?
They won't have to...
The current intention is to build a lot. The future, nobody knows what the future holds, but they may sometime when they want to sell that new lot, so... So if we want to make it a junkyard in an R1 neighborhood, I'm just...
Right.
Okay? I know you're not being serious, but if we want to make it a junkyard in an R1 neighborhood, we'd have to come back here and ask for a used variance to make it a junkyard.
Or even to build something, you know, a house, stuff, come back here.
No. Not if you approve it now. And if you don't approve it now, then we...
Well, that will be 9,000, right? We're going with B, right?
I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Yeah, B.
Yeah, so with 9,000, we'll still have to come back here.
Because you're not asking to do anything with it, so in order to do something with it, you'd have to come back before us, wouldn't you? Because it's a non-conforming lot at that point.
Just like, just like somebody takes a raw piece of land and divides it into 15, 10,000 foot lots with 75 foot front, makes a subdivision. Once the land is subdivided, every time somebody... I did this myself. I had a subdivision where I did not build houses. I had 16 lots, a subdivision, not there to settle mine, my siblings' house. But we didn't build houses. We sold lots. It took 10 years to sell the lots, but every time we sold the lot, nobody had to come back here, because we already had legal size lots, or if they weren't legal, we had variances for the ones that weren't legal. So now, just so you guys know who you'll be voting on, you'll be voting, if you approve this, you'll be voting on allowing Mrs. Skangis at some point in the future to sell this lot to somebody else, or to build a house on it herself on 9,000 square feet. So the thing is, and please don't take this the wrong way. I don't... I try to persuade. I never try to threaten, okay? So, but I'm just trying to make a point here, which is, with no Board of Appeals approval, they could do this and still sell that lot.
Yeah, we know that.
Okay. I know.
We know that. You don't have to tell us three times.
Okay. So, that's all I'm asking.
Yeah. Like I said, I don't have a problem building a single-family house on 9,000 square feet, but I'm just saying, the ad doesn't, to me, doesn't clarify that, but that's your issue down the road.
Ms. Chet? I know it's going to be approved. I know you want me to read that. Do you have an extra copy?
Yeah. Pretty much says what you said.
Doesn't say what's in the required area.
See, my question is, they can do whatever they want with whatever kind of house they want on the lot.
I know.
Well, it does say that. See, the question I have, and the issue I have with it, is a blanket approval gives them the right to do whatever they want with that 9,000 square feet for a house. They could just put whatever they want up for a house on there.
What about the regulations? You can't do anything on them.
What about that regulation, that within a year they have to move to do something with it, within a year?
Right. That's an issue.
Or can you approve it with the stipulation that the lot stayed vacant, and if they want to do something with it in the future, they have to come back here?
That's a good point. You know, if they do get, if you do approve it, they have to act on it.
Within a year.
Right.
That's right. So they have to realize that.
That's not...
You want to do that? You want to withdraw the petition?
Well, we just wanted to make it...
I thought it was a lot easier to tell them on this floor.
We just wanted to...
I know. It's specific. A lot of stuff is specific.
I understand. I understand.
But I didn't realize that we would have to go in...
You have to act on it.
Listen, if you can't go with the 10,000, you don't need nothing. Right.
Or you can come back, you can come back and do this, but in the meantime, you're actually getting declined.
Right.
If you're not prepared to do it within a year...
Right.
You are going to withdraw the petition.
Okay.
Without prejudice?
Without prejudice.
All right. Are you making that as an official statement?
I am, Mr. Calvin.
Okay. What is the wish of the Board, on the wish of...
Well, you got to complete the hearing. I would complete the hearing, see if there's anybody that's opposed to it.
Well, well, go to the wall, whether they can... With draw, without prejudice, we don't need to go any further.
All right.
Anyone read the petition?
And I won't read the letter either. No, we're not having to hear it.
All right, you don't have to. We're fine. Remove the law of petition to withdraw the present. Is there a second in that?
I'll second it.
Please call the roll. You going to call it all? Huh?
Mr. Wood? Mrs. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Curley?
Yes.
Mr. Calvin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do it now.
Go to the watching glass.
I know. We still...
Next case.
Right, right.
Jeffrey. Jeffrey, please. Next case this evening is 9212. You read that, Mr. Chet?
Petitioner Jose Robinson by his attorney Samuel Bychali to allow a pre-existing non-conforming single-family structure located in zoning District Single Residence with lot coverage in excess of 30% to provide improvements for a disabled person.
You have a floor, Mr. Chet?
Honesty and very talented, with me this evening is Roy Rose, who's Jose Robinson, new petitioner, who owns this house and moved to the community. He is an elderly gentleman who's disabled. Roy is a son-in-law, and also with me is Rob Tommelo from Master Builders, who's the contractor who is working to do the improvement. The reason we're before you is that fortunately, the state of Massachusetts has a program that enables people who might otherwise be compelled to live in nursing homes to stay in their own homes. And the reason how they do that is they provide funding that allows people with certain disabilities to modify their homes, adapt their homes, and stay in their homes. And in this instance, Mr. Robinson's got a bathroom on the second floor, but he is unable to get to the second floor. And so the home program would allow a modification to his home to put a bathroom on the first floor, so that's how it started up. And they provide the funding. They give funding, they have a mortgage. And as part of this program, his family made an application. The application was approved. People from CDAC, which is this Community Economic Development Assistance Program, they came out, they inspected, they looked at the plans, and they approved it. And things were moving ahead until when they went to get the building permit to do the modification, it was determined that the bump out where they were going to put in the new bathroom on the first floor resulted in a footprint of the building in excess of the lot coverage that's allowed. And then they were told, in order to do that, they needed to get your approval for a variance of lot coverage in excess of 30%. And so he was in rehab, and he's waiting to come home as soon as the bathroom's going to be completed. And so this is an individual zone, it's not in a public building. There are standards under the Architectural Barriers Regulations for public buildings in terms of parking spaces and modifications and handicap accessibility. And sometimes you see this one, when you go on to Dunkin' Donuts, and they say, "There's no restrooms for anybody," because they don't have handicap accessible bathrooms, even though they're a place of public accommodation. They don't... So they don't have a bathroom at all, okay? Here, this is a private individual's home. It's a great program, and a lot of people stay in this home, but in order to do it, we ran into this issue of lot coverage. Mr. Tommelo did the plan. I submitted the plan. He imposed in a photograph a little bit of the bump out would be, so you could get an idea, and was slightly over the 30% lot coverage, and that's the relief that we seek. And in order to get a variance, there are certain criteria, and I know you're familiar with them. The wording is that there's a hardship, financial or otherwise. I'm suggesting with the otherwise, that this is a hardship otherwise. If there were ever going to be a financial hardship, but if you, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, understood, it would cost them five more to put people in nursing homes than would it be involved in staying in their homes. Here's a program where if you can stay in your home, Commonwealth provides the funds to make the renovation, and then ultimately, the Commonwealth gets repaid. So I think it's a win-win for the people of the Commonwealth. It's certainly a win for Mr. Robinson, who gets to stay in his home that he's lived in for many years, and it's a way to adapt it to his particular disability. He's had a series, and in order to qualify, you have to have people to give a medical evaluation that you're a person who's entitled to this kind of relief. So he's had a series of falls, he's got arthritic knees, he's in a wheelchair, and so he may be otherwise able to live in his home far back, that it doesn't have a bathroom on the first floor, and that the bathroom on the first floor is going to be adapted so that he can wheel his wheelchair in, he can access the shower, that there are, as you're familiar, some of these requirements, there are grubs or bugs that assist people. And so what we would suggest to you is that this is a hardship, and it's one that you could resolve by allowing the variance for lot coverage in excess of 30% to facilitate the bump out that needs to be built to put a bathroom on the first floor.
Yeah. Could I, please, the designer here? Yeah, could you come up, please, while these figures could please? And here, let's get a hand, a test.
My name is Rob Tommelo.
Rob Tommelo?
Tommelo. My company's name is Master Building Associates. Lived in the city for about 35 years.
Okay. Do you have a plan with you?
I know the plan.
No, do you have it with you, so I can...
I have the plan in front of me.
All right. Now, I've built a lot of design work, and this handicap, state handicap, ADA, and everything. Where do you show the five-foot diameter in that plan? I don't see it.
Well, I must say, we're trying to...
It's spherical.
Yeah.
In other words, you...
You need a five-foot diameter.
Yeah.
I'm aware of that.
And that's supposed to be on the plan, and you've got a...
This is not a public building.
Do you want to listen to me, or do you want to have an argument?
Yes, please.
All right. You have a dimension at 6 feet. If you go by that five foot, it's like a hula hoop, then you don't have enough room to go, to buy the fixtures. Now, how do you tell me how you plan to do it without adding on to that? I want to hope, listen, I'm foreign, but I want to make sure you have the right space there.
Well, I've done a few ADA bathrooms also, and you do require a five-foot diameter circle.
That's a state, federal, and...
But this, I was, I was given the dimensions of 6 by 10, and that was provided by the law. Now, we could enlarge that. There's a driveway here.
Well, wait a minute. If you want to enlarge it, you'll have to do it before the board right now.
Yeah, no, I'm not intending to enlarge it. I'm trying to explain that we're not mandated to build to ADA requirements. What I'm trying to do is adapt his lifestyle to make it more comfortable for him to open the door.
Right, then, why are you here among the necessary space right now? I'll be followed, because I know it's needed. It doesn't matter. He could find out later, he's having difficulty in that room. You either have to put a pocket door or something, but you got to show me where that five-foot circle will fit any place in that room.
Right, well, we do have... We would need, we would need probably a foot beyond what we have.
Don't use that word, probably. I want to know exactly what you need.
Yeah. Well, we have enough...
Mr. Bychelli, you know what I'm driving at? It doesn't have enough room there.
I wrote the request, as I normally write requests. I didn't specify a specific lot coverage percent, other than it was greater than 30%.
Yeah, but I'm saying...
So I, my request for relief is to get a lot coverage in excess of 30%, whether it's 31, which I think it is, I read 31.
Yeah.
Yeah. So if it's 32, it's certainly within the request that I made.
Two more feet. How many feet would you need to fit that?
Well, there is a driveway here, so that would impact the driveway somewhat.
But tell me how much. I got to know numbers.
This is, I don't... If you see this photo, then we could sort of superimpose the...
Do you want to, do you want to read... Do you want to read the design?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you can see in the drawing. You see that they have an ADA sink, right? You notice that they have an ADA sink on the wall? So he has the clearance.
You go under the sink, you mean?
Yeah, so he has some clearance under the sink. Just, I don't know if you saw that. I understand. I'm just, I didn't know if you noticed that. For them to make this bathroom ADA, you'd have to go four more feet out, four or five more feet out.
But they don't even ask you for the ADA bathroom.
Oh, yes, they do.
Yeah, I think it has a returning radius to them. That is the standard radius that you see when you see an ADA plan for a public building. But this is not.
Please don't say that again. That's what we don't want.
You work close. You can ask your door swinging out.
That could help. If you have the door swinging out.
Mr. Bychali, I'll address my question. Do you think if we pass this tonight, could they have a plan in Mary's hands in two days showing a problem? If they have to redirect the.
But as I understand, the goal we're trying to achieve, I think Mr. Jasson was right that we have to sit. I asked Rob Tommelo, I know what a handicap shower bathroom facility is, a shower. So you go right in in the wheelchair. I think your question, that's why I asked him, is whether you can turn a wheelchair, have a radius.
And the fixtures.
Okay, well, that's why I don't know about the fixtures.
Yes, I know.
The reason why I have ADA's sink is I'm trying to include fixtures that are compatible with an ADA-compliant type bathroom.
And I praise you for that. I'm just trying to improve by the person that's going to be using.
Right. Well, I think now that the fact that I have a thirty-six inch door that can open out against the wall will allow the person clear to walk in, to wheel in.
You got to show this on a new plan. Why couldn't you put a pocket door instead of an inner house?
Well, it's an outside wall. So it's an outside wall. It's avoiding a lot of the house and a lot of the roofline. So a pocket door would.
Well, can you redesign to fit that five-foot circle?
So I think we need to know the objective. Because the objective is to be able to turn the wheelchair.
Yes, and come back out.
That's the question. So that's a radius?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, it's a circle. The radius is half the diameter of the circle.
Maybe an inch or so. Well, if I could say that the ADA compliance staff is more than generous because it's a public building. This is just, we need to make a turning radius or circle.
I want you to read, you know, we can. I want you to change that plan.
So this is the driveway here. Well, we have to ask the owners if they'd be willing to extend into the driveway somewhat. They have guards on both sides. And right now, where we have a lot, we're well within the setbacks, front and back and side. And in order to give that five-foot radius, I may have to kick it out two feet. And it may not be something they want to do.
More than that.
Well, I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, I got a question because there's a ramp at the rear is how he gets into the house.
Right, elevator.
So if we bumped this out, then we were there, you're not going to build a car, you're not going to build a car back in there so that he can.
It'd be difficult.
Yeah, see, his whole access to the house is through the rear.
Correct.
So this plan, it barely does it, huh? It barely gives him enough room to get a car in there so that he can go in the back of the house. Sam, one question? Ralph didn't include the addition on his plan. Was that for a reason?
I don't think he had that. I don't believe he had that. We did this as a typical plot plan. And I think, I'll tell you now, now I do recall, the house as it is has a lot coverage problem in excess of thirty percent. So he's showing that as it is today, it's thirty-one percent without the bump out. So that answered the question of getting relief because once you add a bump out, we need to roll thirty percent. And then because of the time involved, we wanted to get this in quickly because the gentleman's coming out of our nursing home and rehab. We wanted to get the job completed. He had already filed for the building permit, and then we thought we were going to get it. And so he showed, so I think I asked him to tell me what's the lot coverage. So this is the answer. It's in excess of thirty. So I said, right then and there, we got to file because if we had anything, we're going to be in excess of thirty percent. And then I think I asked Bob to put together the drawing so I could visualize how it would look. Okay? And then I didn't have the knowledge that these gentlemen have about, I knew an ADA sink and I knew about the shower. And I sort of knew about the width of the door, but I didn't know the rest.
So is this an ADA shower? This isn't a shower stall, is it?
No, it wasn't meant to be ADA compliant.
So it's a curb, it's a curb shower?
Well, I want to adapt it so he can wheel in.
That's what I'm saying. So it's a flush floor, it's a normal. So if that's the case, Mr. Callen, if it's a flush floor shower with the ADA sink, he's barely missing the five-foot circle. Because the circle can go under the sink. The sink is clear space underneath.
That's your opinion. My opinion is you don't have to put your legs under the, and it's not a sink, it's a lab called ADA.
Correct, yep. Yep, it's a wall-mounted lab, yep, you're right.
So all I'm asking is to try to rearrange it to get close to that five foot. Even if you have to move that driveway over a little bit, you've got to know.
I mean, we're very close now, but I wasn't thinking of that when I designed it.
So it's because you didn't have to follow it? I mean, technically, okay, so that's that, all right.
It needed convenience for the.
Right, so that's number one. Number two, has the state approved the plans? They have CDAC? They approved that.
They did a site visit.
And they approved.
They need to move. They have to do a visit.
And they don't have a problem with it.
That's another question. Mr. Wood had a good question. What if you made that door open out? Would that help with the radius when he's inside?
No. The door opens this way against the wall.
Wouldn't it be in his way when he's inside trying to, when he's opening to get out?
Sometimes in public buildings, we'll do, the smallest bathroom, we'll do a six-foot six depth, and then we'll do seven-six and the door swinging out. And then you would put, you would put the fixtures this way you would enter.
In residential, you don't do that a lot because it goes into a hallway.
That is actually my idea, but I mean, if I have to do that, sure.
That would help, right?
Right, maybe, yeah. It should be a little swing.
So you could redesign to help the design of that.
Well, it's going to be working. Yeah, it's going to be working. So I'm just trying to make this convenient.
You know, so. So we can proceed with the hearing.
Well, so the door swinging out, that's.
Yeah, but I don't think the majority, there may be a majority that doesn't require you to make any changes.
Well, it's going to be, listen to this. I've always experienced this, like this gentleman. It's going to help the person who's going to use it immensely. That's all I'm saying. And he's willing to.
But the state approved it, right?
Doesn't mean nothing. It's all up to us now.
Yeah, I just trust the state. If the state visits the site.
That's a figure. I don't see a lot of the state. There's no evidence.
What do you think, Gene?
I think that the question, somebody asked a question about, because there's a call of the state. I would say since they approve this, anything bigger would be fine. Smaller would not be.
No, wouldn't be.
Right. So that what we could try to do is taking the board's comments into account and with Mr. Tommelo's experience in other similar situations, submit to you a plan that we think is one that would satisfy you and obviously help Mr. Robinson. And as I say, my concern as a lawyer was that I asked for a right relief. And I think I did because, and that's why, and Mr. Cole's question, when I saw the building, it was over thirty percent.
Yeah, okay.
So the relief that we asked for is the relief we need. But to facilitate that, we need to give you some picture of what it is.
Yeah, it's not complete. So what we're going to do is proceed with the hearing. And there'll be a stipulation that you get that new plan in two days.
I also want to add, maybe it should be like a duration. Are we doing this for the light? So what if the next one moves there? But I know we just approved it something. So I'm going to put this up with it now.
That's right.
I'm going to.
Okay, anyone else? Anyone have any questions for the chairman? Are we here or not? Yeah. Anyone, you understand. Okay, anyone here house favor this petition? Anyone here favor this petition here or not? Over here for those opposed? Anyone here opposed to this petition? Anyone here opposed to this petition? Yeah, not opposed, we have those opposed. What is the initial report?
I'll make a motion to grant the petition.
I'll second it.
Put the stipulations.
I'm not putting any stipulations on it. I'll tell you why, two reasons. Whatever we do, it's going to delay this thing. This guy's in rehab and he wants to get home. We're talking another, I'm just giving you my reasons. Six weeks. I've worked with the state. If they're comfortable with it, if they've signed off on it, then I don't have a problem with it. And I don't want to make it too big that he can't have, has the trouble getting access to his chairlift in the rear of the property. So those are my reasons for approving it as submitted tonight.
But I'm asking this man to show me a new plan. Okay, call it off.
Who's seconded it?
I did.
Mr. Wood?
Yes, to.
Mr. Jasson?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Curley?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes. Okay, there's a president. Next case is thirty-one Range Heights Road.
Sure. So thirty-one Range Heights Road, petitioner Mary Ann Zakowski to allow a nine-by-seven shed on existing single-family residence that encroaches within the side yard and front yard setbacks. Hearing is now open.
Good evening. My name's Rick Mayet. I'm here on behalf of Mary Ann Zakowski, the owner of thirty-one Range Heights Road. I also live there with her, along with my wife and my three small children. Currently doing, in addition to a home, I all of a sudden the same house, the garage was taken down, so we decided to build a shed. Before I built the shed, I reached out to the building department, asked what I need to do in order to build it. They said I had no problem building it because it was nine-by-seven, under the two-hundred square feet. That's allowed. Built me a permit, so I stopped building it. It's completed. Somebody makes a complaint, they come out, tell me I have to move it or come see you guys.
Wait a minute, I interrupt your presentation. Did anyone, you went to ISD, didn't you?
Correct, yep.
Did they tell you, called it a zoning act?
No, they did not. They said.
Let me finish my question. They didn't say you can't put a front yard of this side yard, it's not allowed.
They did not. They did not tell me that.
All right, continue.
So I built the shed. The complaint comes in, so I say I'll apply for a variance, but it's on. I go back to ISD, ask them how to fill out the application. Again, one of the clerks in ISD said, I don't know why I'm doing this. You know, I didn't know there was any such ordinance. Keith, one of the building inspectors, explicitly highlighted the ordinance inherent to each clerk to let them know that there's an issue in the city with accessory structures being put in the side yard or front yard or they may be. So now I'm here, asking you guys for a variance.
I got a question.
On the shed and the side yard.
You've got contractors up there. I've been up there a couple of times. You've got contractors working on the house. Did they have any sense of what the issue was? Did they build the shed?
They did not. I built it privately.
Because somebody, like if you had them on the property, they probably would have been a good source to ask about what's allowable and what isn't allowable. But you've built it yourself.
Built it myself. I was completely oblivious to the zoning ordinance.
Rick, did you talk to any of your neighbors?
I did. I have a petition signed here. Sorry, didn't make talking. We went around.
So the shed is on, the shed is on the right side of ours?
The right side of the side.
Does the neighbor on the right have any problems?
They have no problems. The neighbor on both sides, right? Yeah, neighbors on both sides and across the street. I'm sorry.
This is a plot plan.
This is defense.
I'm kind of out of place.
No, that's not defense. That's just.
How long has it been there?
This was.
Last month?
No, it was in the beginning of May it was completed. So I went to apply and then I looked for the front yard plan, so.
And this is the finishing product? It's going to look like this?
It will be matched the same exact color as the house when the house is completed.
Going to have some kind of siding on it?
It will be staying the exact same color.
It is ugly.
I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, if you go right around that neighborhood, but if you ride around that neighborhood, it sticks out like a sore thumb.
Well, it's not done yet, right?
No, it's not. It's not complete. I didn't paint it because.
I don't mean to paint. I just mean it looks awful.
It's a wooden structure.
Let me ask a question. Sorry, Ms. Curley, did I cut you off? Are you done? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Let me ask a question. Is this thing on footings? How's, what is it on?
It's on.
It on sonotubes or something?
It's on sonotubes.
Sonotubes?
It's on.
A pad?
Footage. Footage, but not.
Inside, it's like inside.
Well, my question is, could you screw it in and have the fence go across it so you'd only see pretty much the roofline? You wouldn't see the shed. You'd only see the fence? Because you're talking about what, a foot?
Yeah.
Would it be able to slide in a foot so that way the fence could just go by and you would only see the little roof of the shed? You wouldn't even see the shed anymore, you know what I mean? It kind of solved everybody's issue, I think, you know? Because you're looking at a normal fence, you know? I mean, I don't know, just something simple. It's only about eight inches sliding it in, you know? Then that way, it doesn't look like a structure. You just kind of see the fence, like a normal yard fence, like you'd see a normal yard with a shed roof. I'm asking. You know? Would it be simple to screw it in a foot?
Yeah, that would be.
Then you could make the fence go across it so you wouldn't.
Well, then it would look like everybody else's shed, sitting in a yard, right?
My neighbors are not opposed to it. I spoke with them prior to doing it. I mean, I went around and had them sign a letter. I mean, I can't make them come here.
Wish I could. I did, to see what.
Opposed to it directly?
You should be in a work hall, you know, since someone can't.
Yeah, I know. I could call you from, and say.
It's mine. I've just had it. I don't care. I don't want to.
The thing here is, this is actually closer to the street than your house.
Yeah, okay.
And you used an old plot plan from 2012.
Yes.
So the plot plan is supposed to show, that's why we were asking Sam before, because normally the plot plan would show on this, would show the shed, and it would say what the, what do you call it? What the variances are? It would show us, you know, like how much is the encroachment on the front? How much is the encroachment on the side?
But I believe that.
That plan, that plan you have, if you read that note from round three, that plan can't be used for sideline.
Well, okay, yeah.
Read it.
Yeah.
You have to have a certain point.
So that's why, and I'm just pointing this out. So that's why, and I'm just pointing this out, when you, when you go down the, um, on the, on the application.
Yep.
It says that you need to provide six plans and it says lot dimensions, area.
Doesn't say, sir.
Existing and proposed structures, dimensions, flood plan, uh, any relevant features prepared. Proposed development addition and lot lines shall be staked upon the property. So the proposed development should be on the plot plan and, like, again.
Okay.
Like you said, this is one that technically is not supposed to be used for.
No, not for lot lines, no.
Yeah.
It's only for mortgage purposes.
Okay.
And it states it right there by the ceiling.
It says in the application.
Professor Lance, there, notes that on your plan.
I just went by the application, I'm sorry.
You should have another.
So, again, I asked, I didn't want to.
You can leave, you can leave.
No, no, I'm not talking about.
Well, again, let me.
Speaking to is the application, I want to add to the application, and it doesn't say anywhere in the application that you need a certified plot plan.
Let, let me ask another question, sorry, um, asking questions. Um, you doing an addition?
Yes.
On the house? I think he has to provide an ASBIL to ISD anyway. That's part of his CFO for his building permit. So, I mean, at that time, wouldn't it, wouldn't the shed be added on at that time? I'm asking, cause usually when you do a, an addition, you have to provide a certified plot plan for completion to get your CFO at the end, and at that time.
To get it zoomed on, right?
Right, so at that time, they'll come out and they would re-hit, they would repin the lot, which then would show the shed being pushed inside where we're talking about pushing it.
Well, right now he's coming beyond it, but he only built the shed.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, right, right.
If you just flush it with the house and make it all flush, what, I think no one would have gone.
He only pulled a building permit for something else.
I'm just trying to avoid him to, I'm trying to avoid two plot plans, you know?
Or two different things.
Flush with the house.
But he said he could take this, this shed and push it back into the progress.
Well, I guess, yeah, he could just try and do that.
And I'm just trying to avoid him, him paying for two plot plans if he's gonna do one for the addition anyway. I'm, I'm just trying to, you know?
You got the floor right now, Mr. Jusono.
I'm just trying to avoid him from paying twice and he's already built the shed. I think he's agreeing to move it, I mean, at the, at the end of the day.
Well, see, the city allows him in the rear yard, and there's a big space there. We don't know if that's possible, but, um, there's a pool there, but to the left is a big space.
To the left?
Yeah, in the rear, the rear yard.
I mean, it's, it's hillside, so the trash.
Well, I don't know, I, I don't see.
I'm telling you, can't see it there.
No, I don't see a total plan here, so I can't tell you.
I'm, I, I would take Mr. Jusono's recommendation, the board would agree with it, moving it back, putting the fence in front of it, so it's there.
We have to move it back and to the left, right?
To the left.
I wouldn't move, I wouldn't move it towards the property line in close.
Cause we can't see where it, you know, where it is on the plan.
But if you, if you.
Your neighbors nearby, you know, you have neighbors.
If you, if you've been up there, if you've been up there, the yard kinda does a, a dog right in there. I just think once it's pushed, then the fence makes it go away, man. I'm asking.
I don't know, they gotta go back.
Go back, that's what I'm saying, if he goes back to the house line, which is where the fence is.
And then we're.
The fence comes across, all you're gonna see is just a roof like a normal shed, like you or I.
Because he has to make it push it to the left?
I wouldn't push it, cause he's gonna.
No, he's gonna push it back.
Just push it back towards the yard.
Yeah, he's just gonna push it back, not to the left, just push it back.
Yeah, just push it back.
I got, yeah, I gotta see it on the plot plan. Yeah, I mean, you've got to.
Tell us and show us.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, you may want to push, push the fence back to the corner of the house. Cause right now, it's all out of square, you know, the way you've got, even the fence, it's, you know, doesn't line up with your house. You know, again, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not making any suggestions, I'm just saying that to make it look nicer, I would think about putting that fence back and then somehow the shed. Somehow, and then somehow the shed behind that.
The tagging, you know, the.
Yeah. I understand. The reason why, I mean, not that this makes any difference to you guys, but the reason why I did try to extend that yard is literally the only yard we have, we have three small bowls. That's the only reason I tried to put the fence up there.
Three small bowls?
Children. Three small, I have two twin boys that are here, and a three year old, and there's no real yard for them to plant. And you've been up and down the streets, people fly up and down the streets, so I'm just trying to be safe.
What do you, what do you kind of put in this accessory building that you have?
Uh, yard equipment, maintain my property, uh, some, some of my pool equipment along with storage for my kids' clothes, toys.
Lawnmower.
Yeah, lawnmower, snowblower, weed magger.
Yeah, hey, now you know.
Gas.
In these accessory buildings, you're only allowed to have so much gas. Now you got three gas tanks, one in each, and then people usually have a spare can of gas. That is a model for filming, be close to your house. Now you can't, that, that thing you can't put, according to the zoning act, you can't put it within six feet of your house.
Okay.
And you gotta keep it three feet from the side.
So that's why we gotta see that on a plot, and it.
I, I believe.
May not say certified, but did, did you read the, the bottom part from a licensed engineer? Which pretty much makes it a certi, it ends up being a certified, it says a licensed engineer or engineer, a licensed, whatever it is here. Um, just a prof, a licensed professional engineer or architect.
Okay. So my, my question is, when, maybe, I don't know if you guys have any answer to it, when ISD came out and inspected, did they do the measurements then? Did you already have those on hand? They would just look at it and say that's a violation?
It's in our hands now.
Uh, but I'm asking, would they have already taken those measurements?
Before, after coming here?
Before, cause they served me prior to the.
No, they look at the, they, all they had to do was look at the shed and say it's in the front yard.
No, I totally understand, but they wouldn't measure if it was within the setback's method. It's just a question.
Oh, they're surely supposed to measure.
I bet he didn't.
Yeah, he probably didn't get out of the.
Probably what's with the street, you know?
Your neighbors' property.
I was just asking the question, I don't know if that's valid.
Let's go.
Right.
Continue.
I was suggesting just getting a lot of plans and show us exactly where you like where this is.
Okay, I, I mean, I'm gonna move it back across the house, if, if that's.
Show, show us what's going down.
And you don't have time to put it.
I would, I would much rather move it three, three feet.
I don't know where he's kind of, I don't know what the.
Resources and time management.
I know, we had a little more time. Just later.
Mr. Jim.
I had it.
Man.
And God bless.
I, I know what it is now, Jim, if you wanted to debate that, but we're debating this.
I'm not debating.
You know?
But that's all I'm, I'm trying to explain.
The reason of this, I'm asking you, if you're gonna move it, why not move it to the rear?
Because it would, it would cost me a lot more money, time and resources.
All right, that's why, oh, you.
And I, I explained it to, I reported, it's, it's gonna take like three small boys. I'm a teacher here, man, I don't have a ton of money. I'm doing an addition to try to accommodate my family.
Okay, all right, I understand. Anyone else here have any more questions? Yeah. Um, okay, thank you.
Where did he, as he checked out there.
Okay, you may have a seat. I want to ask, anyone else here in favor of this petition? Anyone else here in favor of this petition? Over those opposed, anyone here opposed to this petition? Anyone here opposed to this petition? Is there anyone, Mr. Cole, from anyone?
Uh, no.
All right. Anyone not in possession, opposed to that, is it, anyone opposed, what is the wish of the board?
Motion to grant with the stipulation that they'll move it back and run the fence across there and also provide us with a plot plan. They have to provide a plot plan anyway to ISD, so, I mean, you know, either way, you gotta do a plot plan and ASBIL, so, you know what I mean?
You're saying as a stipulation?
Well, they have to do it anyway, so I don't really think it's a stipulation. But if you want to say it, I, I have no problem with that, you know, having it there. They have to do it anyway, so, um.
Well, you already got a building permit, so you didn't, you didn't do that, right?
Right. So you do.
Well, you don't do it till he's done, he wouldn't do it till he was done.
It's at the end, right.
They do it at the end as an ASBIL, that's what they do.
Show the new property.
Oh, yeah, so I'm going to ASBIL, so you're not showing the shed, you're not, right?
I wanna see your current plan.
Currently, probably not, but once that's completed, you can show the shed within the setbacks.
That makes sense.
All right.
So on the motion, I would, I would respectfully, I requested we continue it till November, so I do want to see a plan that shows the new fence, where the new fence is going and where the shed is going behind that fence.
Okay, anyone in opposition to that? You're seconding with that stipulation, continue.
I would say, I would second it with the continuation.
Okay. Please follow along.
Follow along. So the motion was made to, um, provide a new plot plan and continue it to November twentieth.
Well, let me ask a question, just, just so we're clear with what we're voting on. So they're not moving, they have to move it to get the new certified plot plan, right?
No.
So do you want them to have a plot plan done on what they, what they intend to do?
Exactly, yeah, that's all.
So we granting with the stipulation of.
No, we're continuing it, allowing them to come back in.
Please, for us, I want to ask another question.
Sure.
I'm just confused a little bit. So you want me to provide a plot plan, that's if we are moving it?
Yeah, what it's gonna look like, where you gonna move your fence and where you gonna move the shed? Exactly. And they'll, they'll, they'll put it right on there. And then we'll know what, we will, we will then, we will know then what your, what your violations are.
Then, then you could deny that, so I could move that and then, or get it drawn, you guys can deny it. Why can't we just work towards it?
We have to vote.
What would flow apart from.
We're not voting.
Both sides.
We're not voting to approve it or deny.
That's all I'm asking.
To continue.
If you will, the board is.
Continuing here.
So, yeah, I, I think the one, what is the grand, what you want to see? Okay, yeah.
Yeah, since a leap of faith, I don't think anybody's giving you the veil, the veil thought